Okay, we've got a few presentations tonight, so I want to make sure we move to get to the more interesting stuff. I will start the meeting, pass it over to Dr. Henning Piedmont to make some announcements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sunheim, Board of Education Trustees. I'll cut out like the information that is on our agenda, it's under public content. It's all the announcements ranging from policy committee to regular meeting. You can read that on your own so that we can get to the really exciting presentations. But what I will mention is that the Hastings Yellow Jacket Booster Club, thanks to Mr. Merchant, who shared this information with me, has a really incredible newsletter, if you are not aware of. It promotes all the incredible athletic activities and events of our students. It's a really great sort of place to, you know, just honor, you know, all the athleticism that's, you know, among our student body. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. If you are not, you know, you haven't subscribed to that newsletter, make sure that you do. And I hope, Mr. Merchant, you invite them when you make, you're presenting the next sort of group of students, you know, during our, I guess that would be winter sports evening, which we'll have, you know, obviously in the auditorium because we need, you know, more space. There are lots and lots of talented athletes. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'll reserve my comments because I want to hear about, you know, the Hillside Outdoor Classroom. You obviously want to hear about the PTSA tutoring survey and to hear about our website upgrade. So, thank you all for coming.
Pass it over to Ms. Semansky, if you have some comments.
Sure, so this week, Dr. Helen Paschley, Science Consultant, began working with Melissa Shandroff and teachers from the middle school and high school science departments. She provided updates around upcoming shifts in state assessments, facilitated a review of the New York State P-12 Science Learning Standards, discussed progression expectations. She engaged teachers in a sorting activity to determine areas of alignment with the standards, some areas of need, and then next steps were determined for each group. Teachers are actually requesting additional time with her, so I will have to seek some more funding and see what we can do around that. She also engaged some of the teachers in some experiments, actually, because phenomenon is a very big part of the new standards. So that was really fun watching our teachers engage in that way. Mathematics curriculum update. I met with Greg Stevens to begin developing a three-year plan for mathematics. Our initial work together has included determining outcomes in the areas of curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning, and the learning environment. Next steps will include prioritizing outcomes, developing a timeline, and also determining measures so that we can assess our success. We will be involving additional stakeholders, certainly, so we have been doing some preliminary work. And after we have our framework developed, we'll make sure that we get lots of collaborators at the table. And then finally, last week, I met with Jill Ochoa, who's the new teacher mentor coordinator for the district. Our new teachers are well on their way at this point. And we discussed recent mentor meeting sessions, reviewed some challenges that the new teachers were having, and we discussed upcoming opportunities to build their capacity. So that's a quick update, Maureen.
I was going to say that being I had to report out on the Finance Committee meeting later, much of the topics I was going to discuss here are covered in that update as well. And then I can also speak to the bond during the capital update. So, I mean, there's some comments there, but I don't want to be repetitive.
Great, go ahead.
So, I guess it was like a successful midterm week. Also, like this last week, I went to Save the Hillside Woods. It was like a meeting in town, and I was forced to go there for APES, although I did end up really, really enjoying it. More than I thought, which is why I want to kind of bring it and talk about it here. So, Giuliano Chocca, I wish it was my idea, but she thought about on April 22nd, on like Earth Day, that we like would go out as like a high school and like plant trees to like save the Hillside Woods. And I thought it was like a really, really great idea because like if we have time to like take a day off for like the Olympics, I thought it'd be really cool if we like maybe spent half the like learning about the woods and like why it's dying and how we can like all like kind of help it and save it. I think it's like a really kind of like a big kind of monument in our community. I think it'd be great if we could get all the high schools to come help out. Maybe also like a day for like Hillside to go do it or the middle school because they need hands to help. And I feel like it'd be a really great like outlet.
Okay, that's it, okay? Thank you, thank you, Clay. Public comment, does anybody have any comments? Three minutes, state whether you're a Hastings resident. Okay, I'll pass it back over to, we always called you Maureen before we got into the last name thing.
That's fine, I'll respond to it. Caraballo.
Caraballo.
It's Caraballo, yeah. But, huh? So...
With that, the construction.
Do you think it was something else?
A lot of people say Bello. So anyway, so this week, we, last week, we met again as a team with the construction manager and the architects teams to create a presentation that'll be shared this Wednesday with the community regarding the use of the Capital Reserve Funds. And we really do hope many people come out, and the plan for this upcoming meeting is to really go back and walk back through the design phase and the programming phase that took place at Hillside to really kind of go through why things have evolved and really kind of before we get into the discussion around costs, really to remind people of what the process has been. And we can reshare again the programming, that report that was presented to the board from the architects when they had done the work. And just kind of walk people through the evolution of what was the pre-bond design to where the current design stands. And then our construction manager will really be able to get much more in-depth in terms of the cost, you know, the shifts in costs that we've seen, and also speak to, you know, other things that he's seeing currently or they're seeing currently in other work around the state or in the tri-state area and give some sense about opening, like recent bids they opened. So we're really going to get much more in-depth into that conversation as well as speak to our current buildings condition survey and other concerns we've heard regarding the use of the Capital Reserve and if that was to be drained. So, we've done a lot of work around kind of getting all those different topics that we've been sharing out and putting them together. And then the hope would be that many people will attend because I think this will be much more interactive than our board meetings, which are really more presentation mode, and we hope people will come and really ask questions because people will be there to answer them. So that's basically the construction update. We put a lot of, the last few weeks has been focused on creating and making sure we have as much information that we've been hearing from people address in the presentation. So that's it. And we hope a lot of people will attend.
Okay, and I saw there was also, were there some like new drawings that the architects have put together?
Well, there's, they're able to now show more the interior of the building. So we've been looking a lot at exterior kind of renderings. And it'll give people a good sense also of, they also wanted to speak to the, although there's this idea that it's so much larger, speaking to the actual usable space, that the auditorium and kind of showing some interior renderings that do give, will give people a sense of how it will look when it's occupied in different uses. So I think they'll speak to that also and speak to any, you know, why that, why that design became to be and why the space is currently designed and what the size requirement is with the programming. But I think the interior pictures kind of speak to the fact that it's not this, it's not as maybe oversized and when you see it scaled with where the seats would actually kind of go, it does help have a better understanding of the space. I think it's helpful in seeing it, the interior spaces, how you get a sense of how it'll function. Welcome.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to the tutor survey, which PTSA and SEPTA, I believe, have done together.
Right there. Okay, so, thank you for letting us present this. I'm going to start by introducing myself. I'm Joanna Steinglass, and I'm a VP for the high school for the PTSA. I've been on the PTSA board for a very long time, but I actually am new to the high school part of it. So I am here presenting the results of the survey, not because of a role with the high school, but actually because in my day job, I am an associate professor of clinical psychiatry, and I do research in clinical, in eating disorders. And so I spend all my time presenting data, and so I was asked here to be the person to present the data. I'm going to talk about data, and I love data, so it's going to be fun for me, but I will try to keep it short. The background of this, this, and so I wasn't involved in the creation of this survey, so I will do my best to answer any questions, but be kind. The background here was that, and Lou asked me to describe from his perspective as well what the background here was because he wasn't able to be here, but he was a collaborator in the creation and dissemination of the survey. Basically, sometime last year, the kind of, there was a community increase in discussion around the ways in which families have been using tutors in this district. And there was an interest in gathering more information. And the PTA was interested in kind of trying to figure out how to quantify what they were hearing from the community. And the administration got on board and helped to create this survey that I'm going to show you and to help disseminate the whole thing. And the idea was both to quantify and also to create a space where people could say what they needed to say as anonymously as possible. The questions and thoughts about it came through all the usual mechanisms of hearing from the community and then working together with administration to create the questions. And the questions, I'm going to show you, basically, you guys have the results of the survey, and you're also going to receive more of the information afterwards. What I would like to do is just walk you through what all this was so that it's easy to digest the information when you're looking through it in a more detailed way. The questions came through this kind of iterative process with administration. There were questions about specific topic areas. There were also questions about standardized tests. And then the survey was pushed out to the community, and data were collected from April to June of last spring. It was a Google survey, it was anonymous. There were three waves of trying to get as much as we could from the community. And the population surveyed included the all-enrolled parents as well as two years' worth of graduates. So this, I want to orient you to what it looked like. This was, for each subject, there was a series of questions that, of course, you can't really see, but basically we're asking, have you ever engaged a tutor? And actually, I can't see it more importantly. And it elicited information about what grade the students were in and went through each subject of whether you had a tutor in that subject, whether you had a tutor that was regularly scheduled, or occasional, or parental help with tutoring, or online services. And it went through subject by subject, grade by grade. And then there was a lot of room for comments. And people spent a lot of time on the comments, so I want to direct you to those after the meeting. So there were a total of 792 students, according to the budget, and in grade seven through 12. And then there were another member two graduating classes. And responses were received from 231 parents of current students and an additional 11 graduates, which is 29.2% of the population. You can see the percent of responses here by grade. 30% is not, you know, 90%, it's not 100%, it's 30%. But that is actually considered a reasonable response rate for being able to make meaningful interpretations of these data, though more is always better. So you have to keep in mind as we go through all the data that we don't know anything about the people who didn't respond, but we do know that this is a reasonable response rate. And here's the bottom line with the data. So what I think was really well-designed about this survey was that it went through every subject area. So you get a sense of kind of what the base rate was, that there is something like a 6% to 15% kind of base rate for people engaging tutors. And you can see that there's a much higher rate of 25% in science and double that in math, where 50% of the respondents, remember, not the community, but 50% of the respondents reported needing some kind of tutoring in math. This slide, so you will see these data in the report that you have, and I want to give you a little information about how to look at this. First of all, it's phase shifted, so the first set of numbers there is actually the seventh grade. You have to smush the columns to the left. So the first set of numbers are for seventh grade, the second set of numbers are for ninth grade. And the tricky part of this is that if you have a kid in 12th grade, let's say, then you might have had a tutor in geometry, but the denominator of the 12th grade is not reflected. So you can't really get too fine-grained about these data because you can't really tell, based on what grade the kid is in now, whether they currently have a tutor or ever had a tutor. So I would encourage you to really focus on these as meaningful, big-picture data, and these as sort of hard-to-resist looking at the details, but these details are probably not easy to interpret. These, however, are also pretty revealing. So this is going through by how frequent the tutoring is. So the blue bars are regularly scheduled tutoring, and the red bars are occasional tutoring. And the main point here is that most of the people across the board were having regularly scheduled tutoring. These were not one-offs, these were really a real consistent need. Okay, then, there were 24 pages of comments that were submitted by parents. There is a tremendous amount of information in the qualitative data. You are going to get the qualitative data if you haven't already. I believe you're going to get it after the meeting, and I would really encourage you to look through it. I'm a quantitative data person. These qualitative data are incredibly informative. And the reason it's so informative is that it is across the board for the range of reasons why people engage tutors. There is no one story in there, there is no, there is no need to excel. Whatever your ideas are about the, why people get tutors, they're all, every possibility is in there. So some people were saying that their kids needed it to pass courses. Some were saying that it was for region's prep after having failed. Some were talking about wanting to reinforce confidence and improve, reinforce learning. And there were some that were saying they wished they'd had tutors, but they hadn't engaged them. There are also a lot of specific comments that are revealing, but it's really the debunking of the myth that I think is the most informative in the qualitative data. It was not that people were just trying to push their kids to excel. It was certainly not that there was resources to go around. It was, it was reported, the full range, a burden, and the ways in which it influenced family life are discussed in there. But it really just speaks to, there was a need, and it's important to know about. So, the responses tell us that there's a base rate of about 6% to 25% of families pursuing tutoring, with a much higher rate in math. The qualitative data are being reviewed by the high school and by each department and have been reviewed with the math department at the high school already. And basically, my understanding is that there are efforts underway, beginning to make good use of these data, which is great to hear because parents really put a lot of time and effort into getting this information out there. So we appreciate that you guys are hearing it, and we hope you'll dig into the qualitative data. And if there's anything we can do to help support following up on the findings, let us know.
Thank you.
Should Ms. Semansky mention a couple of things that we are doing, just so that with regards to mathematics, because she's been engaged in those? And I do appreciate the PTSA and SEPTA spending time with Melissa and me, letting us know about certain areas of concern, and, you know, and the board has also, you know, been, you know, very helpful in sort of laying, establishing sort of the context for a lot of what we've been hearing. And it has been extremely helpful, and we appreciate it. And Melissa will talk to you about some of the efforts that she's been engaged in as a result of what we've been hearing since July.
Sure, I'd like to highlight a couple of things. So first, as any new person coming into a system, you know, there's always been this saying that it's important to hit the ground learning, right? And so, learning comes in lots of different forms. And so there has been a lot of effort on our part in terms of understanding the system to triangulate different data points. So that comes in a variety of different ways. It comes in the form of more standardized things that come from the state at all different levels of the system, elementary, middle, and high. It comes through having conversations with students and understanding perceptions data from the children directly about how they experience their learning. It comes from speaking to stakeholders throughout the system, whether it be teachers, thinking about the parents and the broader community. And, you know, this survey actually has been incredibly helpful. I know that tonight is the first time that it's been presented publicly, but it has been indeed shared with the department. And there is, you know, in working with Greg Stevens on this, there is tremendous, you know, real care about seeing those numbers and thinking about next steps. So that's one thing. So the second piece is the teachers in the system and the administrators as well. So talking about that data literacy piece, and some of you may have heard me talk about that as part of my goals for the year, really delving into what we have in terms of access to what we call the Level One data so that we can drill in and we can think about individual students and how they're performing at a moment in time and how they're performing overtime, how they're performing in what we call a disaggregated way, so looking at different groups of students, whether it be grade level or certain demographic information. We've been working with the building leadership teams to strengthen our MTSS processes, which is around creating a response to intervention. So thinking about what are the protocols that we have in place that are really supportive of children by identifying areas of need and putting targeted supports in place. And then thirdly, I mentioned just earlier the work that Greg Stevens and I have started and will be expanding to a larger group of stakeholders, but really looking at curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning, and the learning environment. All five of those things really work synergistically together. So we are at a place right now where we are in the process of defining those outcomes, and we are thinking about, you know, where are those priorities based on what we're seeing from the data that we've been looking at? So we are currently right there. We have a lot to do, and we expect that it will be joyful learning for both the adults and the students in the system. And we would like to recognize and thank the building leaders and also Greg as department chair, who is deeply invested in this work, as I mentioned before, and the teachers. We have a phenomenal faculty here, and people are rolling up their sleeves, and we look forward to moving forward. So thank you.
And that work kicks off at our March 18th Superintendent's Conference Day, which is, you know, six hours of dedicated professional learning where teachers are coming together and really looking at the New York State Learning Standards, looking at the student performance data, and identifying those gaps and then setting into motion plans to utilize time during the summer to really do the work of looking at all those areas, you know, from how we accelerate, you know, what's the philosophy driving, you know, acceleration and when it starts, what resources we're using, what does math instruction look like, you know, and how do we help children to apply skills that they learn in math to solve real problems? That's really at the heart of, you know, all the work. You know, it's not enough to just learn, you know, Algebra II or Algebra I, but like why do we need to know it and how do we use it in the real world is, to me, the most important, you know, set of questions that, you know, Melissa and Greg and me, you know, the leaders are grappling with. So that's what you're going to be seeing, and you're going to be seeing throughout next year, you know, our presentations on all that work, plus identification of certain resources, as well as professional learning that will continue. So we are doing that work in earnest, and, you know, you will see changes.
That's just a very high level. And I know that this, you know, data, you know, you don't want to make too many conclusions from one, you know, one survey, but is there, is there a benchmark sense of, hey, this is a problem across a lot of schools, whether it's New York State or nationally? Is there something here which is different in Hastings that's maybe leading to some of this? Looking for external support? Or, you know, the other answer is, hey, I don't know, we're looking further into it, but...
Well, I think it's, I think, you know, as Melissa, you know, mentioned, that we want to make sure that teachers are looking at, you know, this data and, you know, being able to sort of determine within their own practices what accounts for this. Some of you are probably familiar with the Harvard Ed review article written a couple of years ago called, "What So-Called Low-Performing School Districts Can Learn From So-Called", I'm sorry, "What So-Called Learning Performing, Low-Performing School Districts Can Teach So-Called High-Performing School Districts?" And that, I believe, was written by Richard Elmore. And basically, the differences are, you know, that the approaches of which both of those sets of, you know, sort of groups of people or organizations look at, whose responsibility is it for the child to learn? You know, is it something that the teachers roll up their sleeves and they have the time? You know, is the schedule arranged for teachers to work together to collaborate? That's one of the areas that our master schedulers are looking at, and that's very important. So if teachers don't have the time to sit together and to, you know, figure out these problems, to develop common assessments, to analyze the assessment data, you know, to look at, you know, each other's practices, then they can't address it. So I think that, and then that becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy, which is, you know, students needing to, you know, maybe get some assistance from tutors. And I think that there's a lot to be said about, you know, really making sure that we give those teachers that time, you know, and space to be able to do that, and then work towards, you know, whoever may need some help with differentiated instructions. So that's also now being, you know, that's part of the professional learning that we've already identified, and that kickoff happened a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, the beginning of the month. So, and that's a very important practice, too, you know, how to, you know, take complex content and, you know, help children with different learning styles and interests and readiness to be able to delve into, you know, abstract concepts and understand those concepts, and for teachers to teach those concepts in different ways. Math is a story. It is, math is a story. And how do we get at that story? You know, I see Maureen over there, she understands that math is a story. She does, she loves those stories, don't you? She loves stories, she does. So anyway, that's the sort of foundation of what we're doing, you know, and as Melissa said, you know, we have, you know, dedicated, you know, talented, you know, teachers who are in our district for a long time, and I think we need to, you know, to work, to provide them the opportunity to work together. And that, the schedule was not set up for that to happen. Understand that, it was not, and we know that. And so that's one of the major sort of barriers that has to be removed, is that they have the time during the course of the school year. And otherwise, you know, the only time they have would be the Superintendent's Conference Day in September, which is really a half a day, another time in March, and that's it. So that, that change alone is going to make a significant change, I mean, going to give them that time along with Melissa and Greg, who's extremely talented and capable in terms of leading this effort forward.
I'd like to say, I'd just like to thank the PTSA and SEPTA for undertaking this whole survey, I think. And Joanna, thank you so much for your really excellent presentation of the data and the results in a way that makes it not complicated but very clear. And even though it's not 100%, I think 30% is a lot. And I think it's a very complicated issue that I think it's great that we finally have started to look at. I can remember years ago, when it really, tutors were first starting, I think, in a way. And I think they're so much more common now. I was sitting in a college admissions committee meeting today, and we were actually talking about this whole issue of kids who get tutored and kids who don't get tutored, and how do we really look at scores on ACTs and SATs? And what does it really mean? And I think that for kids, there's the issue of when they really do need help, and then there's the issue of when parents think they need help or why they need help. And I think it's good that we are actually starting to look at this and see what we can do and get somewhere with it in terms of what's best for kids.
Absolutely. And that article is called, "What So-Called Low-Performing Schools Can Teach So-Called High-Performing Schools", and it was written by Richard Elmore in 2016. So it's worth a read, it's short, but it does get at that sort of notion of some of the, you know, the philosophies behind what triggers and contributes to some of that, that sort of... behind what triggers and contributes to some of that, that sort of outsourcing that occurs.
I just have one short comment. I want to also thank PTSA and SEPTA for the data.
Speaker's mic.
Sorry. Just one other comment, and it's just sort of tangential in a way, but I think part of the piece that should be looked at is this sort of idea that students can be more active in their pursuit of learning and engaged either with peers or with their teachers as processors of information and not just recipients of content, so that while they're at school, it's a time where they feel the confidence and the freedom to get the resources and the ideas and the solidification of new thoughts. And so, it's, yes, I think mindful to be thinking about the teacher's time, but I think it's also mindful to be thinking about how we can set up students to have that mindset of being actively engaged while they're learning.
I'd just like to respond to that. I completely agree. And I think one of the wonderful things about the mathematics standards is actually there's a whole set of standards that are really around the practices. And so, if you're looking at that and you're also considering the new science standards that are coming, you know, they're right here, right now, but there are disciplinary core ideas in science, but there are also these cross-cutting concepts that have direct connections to mathematics. So there, and there are practices. So that's something that, you know, I've been familiar in many places that that content is an area of focus, and I think that making sure that that's not lost, and there's a great emphasis on practices, you know, in terms of those skills, critical thinking skills, you know, making use of models and solving, using tools strategically, and all of those practices that are in service to working with the content and making sure that there's authenticity to the work are things that Greg and I have also been engaging around. So I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Hillside Outdoor Learning Center.
It's all the audience.
Should do a dance, like with this, like some kind of dancing.
It's pretty impressive.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We are absolutely thrilled to be here to present to you the proposal for the outdoor classroom at Hillside. And as you see, we have a phenomenal team here of teachers and parents and administrators, and we are excited to share with you what we've created. So this all began last summer, not this past summer, the summer before that, when I sat with PTSA and I was told to dream big because we have some monies. So that was very exciting. Anytime I hear about dreaming big and money, those go together beautifully. And what we knew was that there's been significant community interest in the idea of getting children outside more and having more opportunities to be outside for learning. So when we thought about the two, we knew this was an opportunity for us to pursue an outdoor classroom. We thought about the fact that there are significant benefits to outdoor learning for children, things like motivation, confidence, decreasing the level of stress. And we also knew this was an educational trend in the region. A lot of school districts have actually put together bonds and have put together opportunities for student learning outdoors, as well as nature centers really creating learning spaces for children to experience play outside. As a result, we decided to embark on a journey of creating some subcommittees. So we began with looking first at our recess time and our instructional time, and from there, we moved into our outdoor classroom committees, where we looked at the instructional process. And you're going to hear today from our committee about exactly what our steps were as we walked through both the instructional process and then the design process. In order to create these subcommittees, we really wanted to be sure we had all of the voices of our community. So we asked for a primary teacher and an intermediate teacher and a teacher of special education, and we asked for a parent representing all three of those groups as well. In addition, we had student voices, which you'll hear about later, through our student council. We created these committees, and today you're going to hear about the amazing work that our teams have done. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it on to our instructional process committee.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Robyn Farrell. I'm the STEAM teacher at Hillside Elementary School, working with children kindergarten through fourth grade. Being part of the instructional process committee was a really nice match, because so much of what we're doing in STEAM benefits from being outdoors and taking advantage of place-based education. Because of my work in STEAM, I already had connections with SELF, which is the Center for Environmental Literacy. So once on the instructional process committee, I reached out to them to get some really great research articles on the benefits of outdoor classrooms, what they look like, what's incorporated. And as a team, we also made site visits to a variety of local schools, conservatories, and nature centers. From this point, we were able to kind of compile all of our noticings and our wonderings. And that's what Kristen will talk about next.
I am Kristen Pomer, special education teacher at Hillside. So our research, as Robyn said, was going out to other schools, doing research to find schools that had outdoor classrooms and where they were in the process. So this slide lists some of the things that we saw. I won't read all of them to you, but what stood out was we saw lots of different stations for music, for building, for constructing, gardens, composting, sundials, a sensory path and gardens. And we got to really talk with the administrators and the teachers that were involved at these centers. They told us what they loved, they told us what they didn't love, and we got to put all of that together and think about what would be best for us at Hillside.
I'm Eugenia Swart. I have two kids in the district, including a fourth grader at Hillside, and I own a garden design company. As part of this instructional process committee, I was given the task of visiting nature centers to see, you know, what outdoor structures and settings they used in outdoor educational settings. And I'll tell you a little bit about what I saw and how that translated to what we kind of honed in for Hillside. And there were a lot of rustic materials, wooden natural things, stump stools, a canoe dugout for storing nature items. We knew that we needed something weather-resistant for our purposes. There was a really neat, interactive model of a Native American village, where kids could collect, you know, wood to build a fire and take shelter and stick wigwam. And we really liked the wigwam. There was concern about bugginess and critters, but we wanted to make sure we maintained some kind of interactive play space. A lot of the nature centers had pollinator gardens that were enclosed, and we discussed plantings in consideration of kids with bee allergies and also level of maintenance. We kind of opted for planters full of native ornamental grasses that provide seed and shelter for birds. There was a really neat nature-based story walk, where kids could follow a picture book while meandering through the woods. We liked the idea for our space of a lending library, like on a post, that would contain magazines and reading materials. And then I just added some ideas that I had from a landscaping perspective, a checkerboard lawn for drawing, writing, games, a dry stream bed, and a reflexology stone path. We incorporated a stone pathway into our design and liked the idea of a mounted touchpad, a sensory touchpad.
So our next step was to make recommendations to the design committee. So we basically were able to compile our wish list and then tailor it down to what would work best for us and make recommendations. So the first space that we looked at was the bird garden outdoor instructional space. So that is the existing bird garden that we have at Hillside that we were thinking about how we can make it a really great outdoor classroom. So we love the idea of having benches and stadium seating, where a presenter could present out there, perhaps a canopy, so we can be out there when the sun is very strong or even through light rain, having planters and window boxes and storage for materials. The second space that we looked at was the back playground space, which would be more of a collaborative space. We love the idea of having a bench around the existing tree, picnic tables with game tops. Again, Eugenia mentioned the lending library, a place to connect, collect items from nature, a sensory touchpad stream, and a bridge for play. What we loved about the bird garden was that it could be viewed from inside the school, so it would be a great focal point. The layout was already really working great, and the grading of the land worked for the space, and the space can be used throughout the school day. When we looked at the back playground, this space was already allocated when we built the new playground structure, so the space is already there. We wouldn't have to move anything that was existing.
My name is Nina Khorozova, and I have two kids in the district. One is in Hillside now, and one is in the middle school. I'm sorry?
A little closer to the microphone.
Just speak a little louder?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm also SEPTA representative in the design committee. Design committee is a collaborative group of teachers representing Hillside and parents with a background in design. We came together, the parents also represent PTSA and SEPTA. We came together to review the wish list from the instructional process committee and work on those wish lists, and we came up with the dream design, which Dawn is going to present.
Hi, I'm Dawn Macy. I have a first and third grader at Hillside this year, and I have a background in set design, so I volunteered my technical skills to this process. So our first technical step was to survey this space that we had been given, and so here you'll see a ground plan that we made. To the far left is the bird garden, and all the way to the right is the back playground space. And the two spaces are connected by a long, grassy pathway behind the building. So essentially, everything in light green is the full outdoor classroom that you see here. And so, once we had everything measured out, our goal was to incorporate as many of the wishes from the instructional process committee as we could. And so, this next slide is a rendering of the bird garden space. So this space is ideal because of the slope of the land for stadium seating. So what you'll see here are three rows of stadium seating built out of mesa block, which is a stone-like material that was readily available to our Buildings and Grounds Department and already used at Hillside in the front area. So we have three rows of seating, 10, 15, and 20 feet long, can easily accommodate a full class, and they face a leveled flagstone patio for a presenter with a whiteboard that's about three by four, freestanding behind the patio. And the patio is connected to the building with a flagstone pathway for easy access. We placed it over to the right of the bird garden in hopes that the building could provide some nice shade for us, that is the shadiest side of the garden. To the left, there will be two large boards. One will be a chalkboard, four by eight, for chalk or painting with water, and another is a transparent plexi that can be used for acrylic paints or dry erase markers. And in the far right corner, we will have built some large planters for some native grasses and seasonal plantings, and the far left would be a weather station behind the tree. What will remain in the space are all of the bird feeders. There are several in the tree already that will stay, and there were two freestanding feeders that have been moved for the patio, but they will come back to the space. And this next slide is the rendering for the back playground. So this space is shared with the playground, so it was important to us to visually separate the two areas, so the kids had like a visual cue that this was a different space. So this, we thought, would be a nice place to get the sensory pathway that was mentioned earlier in. So essentially, the outdoor classroom would be outlined by this pressed stone mosaic pathway that would be made of rocks of different sizes and shapes and textures. A bridge to enter the space is also a really nice visual cue that you are entering a different space from the playground. And it is our hope to plant grass there to separate it from the woodchips of the playground, and then the entire outdoor classroom would be green, which would be nice. And since this area would be more for collaborative work and small group work, we designed these table-bench-like structures that would be made of a wood-like composite material and stone, and there'll be different shapes and sizes, and the kids can sit on them and lean on them and kneel on them. And this space is really more about movement. And then the central focal point would be that large tree that's there. So we would build a bench or a platform around it as a nice spot for a presenter to address the whole class. And there's a lot of space back there, so we would also be able to add a storage cabinet for natural materials, acorns, leaves, whatever's collected by the classes for their work, also two additional boards on the back fence that could be either chalk or plexi, the lending library over to the left, and then there's plenty of space for some other smaller checkerboard lawn games or anything toward the back tree. I think that's it.
That's great.
Hi, I'm Jackie Mantal. I'm a third grade teacher at Hillside, and I'm a member of the outdoor classroom design committee. And the teachers on this committee wrote an enrichment grant to the PTSA, and we were granted $6,000. And from there, we decided to break up the project in two different phases. So phase one has already started on the bird garden, and there is hope that creating this space will give students an opportunity to spark creativity and spend more time outdoors and have natural learning experiences.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Zadory. I'm a first grade special education teacher at Hillside. We collaborated, the design committee collaborated with Katie Magnata, who runs the student council, and Tammy Black, who is in charge of collecting box tops. And the student council, together with the box tops, donated $1,000 to provide materials for the outdoor classroom. The members of the student council voted on what they would like to see in the outdoor classroom, and they voted on planters and the painting board.
Hi, I'm Joe Motorana, Director of Facilities. I'm here to give you the timeline for all this, this whole project, great ideas. As you can see here in this picture, we started the excavation in the fall to create the three tiers for the seating and the flat plateau for teaching. And as of today, the weather's cooperated. We're out there actually putting the seating in, and we hope to be done by, I would say, by early April if the weather continues to cooperate with the bird garden area.
And finally, good evening, everyone. What learning will look like out there? Under the two phases up here, as far as phase one with the bird garden and then phase two with the back playground collaborative space. Tons of opportunities where, under the phase one, you have more of a presentation area for both students and teachers to present, read aloud, writing lessons, any type of dramatic play and songs, and various STEAM activities. Whereas in phase two, more collaborative work going on, you know, teaming class relationship, building scavenger hunts, obstacle events, science, multi-sensory. And I think, again, it's just enhancing what we already have as part of our curriculum and another space that we can add to, you know, an already, you know, existing environment that's comfortable for learning for all students. I also think it's really important to highlight the amount of work that went in by the committee members here, site visits, collaborative meetings throughout the, you know, the year-long process, and we're really looking forward to this being part of our community moving forward.
Outstanding. So that concludes our presentation. I would also just like to recognize and thank this team. We have an amazing, amazing group of teachers and parents and students that really have put their creativity and their dreams together to dream big. So we hope that you enjoyed the presentation, and we look forward to welcoming you to a ribbon-cutting ceremony, hopefully in the spring of 2020.
That's cool. That's great. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I remember being there for the very first meeting we had about this a year and a half ago, and to see how your vision for it, when you planned out all the committees and all the people who joined in, how it all came together into this beautiful presentation and this terrific plan, so exciting. Thank you.
It is.
You guys did a great job.
We did. Yes. And they're going to exit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have more box tops to sit on.
Thank you all again for coming and for all your work and dedication to this project. Don't take it personally that they all have abandoned.
So we've got our third presentation of the evening. We've got the team that's been working on the website.
Yes.
Looking forward to it.
Yay! Yay!
I just want to say one thing just before they get started. That presentation, I hear people in the community complain about, you know, I want this or I want that. That presentation was exactly what, you know, I think of when I think about the school, working with the community, working with parents, teachers. I heard about an outdoor classroom a long time when I first got on the board. There were emails that came through. Amy put this kind of task force together. You think task force is going to go to die. This is definitely not dying. And it was, it was just understanding how many people I hear asking for things and how rarely I see something like that, that was really impressive.
Very impressive.
It was a big testament to collaboration and skillset and professionalism, and really the dedication of a number of people who are clearly willing to bring their energy to the table. And I think we always should take the opportunity to highlight something like that because the benefits that are going to accrue to this community are just boundless. And it brings just an eternal grin to my face because it's a really great thing.
That last sentence, I'm glad that you sort of started the conversation debating whether to say it or not to the assembled group, but it's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of the budget that we talked about. It's really not very much money, and it's a tangible improvement on the experience the kids will have at Hillside. So it's really pretty impressive, a return on investment to what they did. So it's my, you know, it's quite impressive.
And it supports what Clay kicked off with, you know, the conservation project to save the Hillside Woods. And I hope there is a pretty big, you know, event for the district on April 29, 22nd to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. And so, and we're actually meeting with a few of those people. So they reached out to us, and it was Kat and the whole group. And so we're meeting with them along with the principals so that we can have a full day, you know, where everyone's involved across the three buildings so that, you know, we have the benefit of being surrounded by some woods that need our TLC, right? Thank you, Clay.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Lane. I'm the Director of Communications for Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's. And I'm here tonight with my colleague, Amy Rosenberg, who is a graphic designer and our website specialist. We were invited a few months ago by the superintendent to work with members of the district on examining the current website and looking at information you'd already gathered on your audience's experience with the website and seeing if we could come up with ways to improve upon it. The, Amy's going to really present the details on that, but just by way of background, I have more than 30 years of experience in media, starting as a newspaper reporter, running my own business, and serving some, you know, very high-end clients. And now I'm in my 10th year in my role at Bosse's. And in that role, my department serves over 40 school districts across the state in some capacity. And locally in Westchester and Putnam, we have specialists in 10 to 12 districts providing regular public relations communications services. So I have the occasion to be on school district websites all the time as part of my work and get a feel for what's trending, what people are finding is more useful and more effective. And so that's my overarching, like, responsibility here, and then Amy's got the nuts and the bolts. She is.
Hi, I'm Amy Rosenberg, and I've been a graphic designer in communications and marketing for over 20 years. I've designed and implemented websites in both the commercial space, most recently a lot in healthcare, really focused on usability and end-user ease of finding information, and nonprofits as well. So I'm going to take you through a little bit of our thinking here, and I know the time is getting late, so I will try to keep it brief. So, you know, again, we went over to say the question, how can the current website be improved? We took a look at just taking a, we instituted the Google Analytics, which wasn't on the website before, and just tried to get a sense of how much the site was being used, just monitoring it. And it's a pretty healthy stream, about 2,000 visits a day. And between this time that we implemented it, there were nearly 150,000 sessions since October. So it is significant, which is fantastic. And, you know, just to give some thought to who is using the website, all the different stakeholders, and all the different hats of people that are coming to the website for the different information that they're find, that they need to find. And also what we took into significant, to inform our decision-making, was feedback from a communications audit report that was conducted in 2018, and that was interviewing parents, administration, Board of Education members, and parent organizations. That was presented last winter, and then our leadership group overlaid on top of that. And I think what Ellen and I were seeing really were very similar thoughts that the feedback, you know, kind of was highlighting. And that website leadership group is members that are here today, Valerie and Janine, Melissa, Maureen, Sylvia, and Allison. So, let's take a look. I tried to give some thought and say, let's bucket the biggest issues. So issue number one were frustrations with having too many links. The current site, when you scroll down, there's a plethora of links in the, I'm seeing a lot of head shaking. Okay, I don't need to review that. But just from, you know, what does that mean from a user experience perspective? I'll give you a little visual there. So not too long ago, this was what we looked at when we sat in a car, right? You had FM, AM, and you had eight to 10 choices at best if they came in. I'll give you another thought here. Now, you know, we have satellite radio, you have audiobooks, you have streaming music podcasts, your choice. So the idea is that even from the moment you're getting in the car, you're making all these minuscule choices all day long, subconsciously. Another example used to be, you know, two sugars, black, light, how do you want your coffee? Nice and simple. Now we've got our flat white venties, our cafe mokas, our iced caramel cloud macchiato's. So, you know, we're just living in a time that more, more choices seems to be better. But let's take a look at what that means when you get to our site. So lots of choices. We see lots of navigation from the top, going down the right, lots of links, not in any particular order those links, and not alphabetized. And as you scroll down, you go into news. And when we looked at other websites, we were seeing that were out there, that also informed where we were going to go with this. We took a look at, you know, mapping out the underlying structure and also, you know, mapping that out and trying to see the usage. And some of those links are just not really getting hit. So you're, you have a lot of options on where to go, and from what we're seeing, there's really a common, more common paths that people want to go. And what this all amounts to is decision fatigue. You know, by the time you get to the website, after making thousands of trivial decisions all day long, we're tired. We really want to go to that website. We want to get to the information, and it's frustrating. So that's that number one. Issue number two, navigation, kind of overlaps. It's difficult. It's inconsistent. I'll give you that little visual. We had just seen the landscape committee, so can you imagine? You put up this beautiful circle of a design, but actually what's getting used is this cut across path. So basically, from a navigation standpoint, from the communications audit report last year, there were a lot of feedback that it was hard to tell what school site you were on, you were unsure where to look, and there were frustrations with having just too many links. Sometimes the teacher page info is inconsistent and sometimes non-existent. So what that middle path is called is the desire line. There's actually a name for it. And it's the shortest route to the desired destination. So our goal is to make sure that we can get as many, map out as many desire lines and showcase that on the website. I'm just going to flip over here. I'll go out to our current site. So this is the elementary school site. And I'm going to give an example of a parent who might be going to look for information, very common information that a parent would want would be on transportation. Sorry, they would be here in the elementary school. Let's say they bookmarked it. There is no transportation link right now on that website. So they would need to go back up to the district. And then into this district link, and then scroll all the way down to the transportation. And again, that's a very common, obviously, piece of information that people are looking for. So very, there are a lot of long navigation menus currently. And basically, you know, the feeling is we are not fulfilling those desire lines as best as we can. So I'm going to show the proposed website. We landed here. Again, we were informed by a few different districts that we went out and took a look at, local districts. A lot of them had a very visual interface and very clean and simplified navigation underneath that was really stripped down. And that is what, you know, through an iterative process of mapping out what other districts had and then what best practices look like, and then marrying that up through conversations of what would work specifically for Hastings, that's how we arrived at our, our current map. This right here that you're looking at is really a mock-up. It's not really a live site we were able to just build just so you can get a sense of what that looks like. I'll flip over to it. So we have these nice scrolling pictures, obviously pulling in the colors. And then when we scroll down, this is where the meat of things start to come in. We added a find it fast area that's bucketing the most common things that the different audiences would be looking for. So that first row is for families, for students, for staff, and then underneath are the type of content that is most commonly being looked for. So the focus was on improving user experience with, obviously, a visually pleasing homepage layout, just giving you a more confident feel that when you get there, you're going to find the information that you're looking for. When you keep scrolling down, it would keep going into upcoming events. This isn't filling right now, but that's your Facebook feed that's filling in anything that's posted. And then you can get into news stories here. So we can pop that up. Going back up here, this is where you would get to your different schools. We gave each school their own identity. Right now, it is just one logo. So if you switch on to the elementary school, you may not realize that you're on the elementary school currently. Right now, we propose switching so that you would know which site you're on. And that photography can change, and the stories can change to be school-relevant. However, the find it fast icons and all of that information, that would all overlay and be consistent from the district site to the elementary site to all the different sites. What this also does is create a process for where to put information, and that is what's going to ongoing keep this site clean as well. So that's some of the thinking of the different organizational information and the navigation. I didn't provide, roll over there. So we have these dropdowns, and those are horizontal, and it's to give you a cleaner feel, quicker way of getting to that info. And you really have a strong school presence for each area. And I just wanted to show, so for the family that was looking for the transportation info, it would be right there. They'd go in there. Let me just click over. Yep, there we go. So right there, once you go into that find it fast, this is our mapped area. We really bucketed, and this will be in some handouts that I provided as well. So we really sat and went through and said, what are those big buckets of information that people are looking for? And took a hard couple of processes through that to define that. And then this is just a peek at the simplified site navigation that's underlying what you were just looking at, the visual. This is what's underlying it. You can see it's very much simplified and streamlined from the district level and then all the way through. And that's everything. The aim was to deliver an improved user experience on the website through a visually pleasing homepage layout, consistent and intuitive navigation, and consistency across the sites. There was a lot of input from around the room and different perspectives, and I think we had a good working committee, a lot of input, and then we were very pleased, I think, with where we landed, and thank you for considering our proposal here.
How is the content management system? Is it pretty easy for lots of people to update news?
So the beautiful thing is that this is actually the current content management system that the website is on. It's Blackboard. Yep, yep, it's Blackboard. So what this is, is an upgraded template from Blackboard, and it's taking advantage of some of the newer features that Blackboard offers. So behind the scenes, anyone who is already familiar with how to upload and post, once they log in, it'll look just the same. They'll see all those, the subnaps and everything. So it looks very different on the outside, but, you know, the underneath is the same.
I think we ran into is that they didn't have advanced blogging capabilities with the past one? Does this have blogging?
It does have a blog feature. I'm not sure how, you know, in terms of advanced, is there something specific?
No, well, I don't, it was just hard to get anything to work on the last one.
To get it. Okay. There is.
Maybe advanced has worked.
Yeah.
Operational, operational.
There is a nice feature where, yeah, you can set up a page as a blog page. So if you wanted to separate it by dates.
We're just thinking about, you know, superintendent's blog or, you know. So, so for example, one of the things we've dealt with is for example, one of the things we've dealt with is our elementary school principal, Amy Kaisers, because we did have that functionality. She just went and got some other blogging, I think smores, some other blogging platform, and just puts all her stuff over there. So, and then it gets sent out, and then if you go, hey, you know what? Like, I know she sent something in October. What was that? Where do I find that? It's not on the website. So we have this issue where the different school buildings are sending out different information, and it's never tied back to a central repository. So I think blogging functionality would be a great way that every time, let's say that twice a, middle school wants to send out twice a month some information, well, it's put on the blog, and then it's always sent out as a link to that blog. So I get it, I read it, and then for two months, I'm busy and I don't read it. I can at least go back and find out where all the posting has occurred. Is that something that...
Yes. Yeah, there's a page type. So when you go to build it, you can select to build it as a blog page type.
Yeah.
And then it puts like a sidebar. You can customize where that is, but it would build each post by, you know, October, you know, by the years, and then it would have a dropdown on there. So...
This isn't really, you would help exist the design of it. It's more a governance issue for us that we get building leaders to commit to getting off proprietary platforms that are fragmented all over the place and start to use a common repository so that we can find this information. That's one, I think, one of the biggest frustrations I hear from parents, which is just like, wait, it went out in email? Was it a link? Was it, where did that go? And I think some of it's because it didn't exist, or they were struggling to use the actual platform. So it might take a good six months to like get everyone's head together and say, this is how you're going to do it. So I'd love those building leaders that have access to the CMS and really learn how to use it, actually go through training so that we've got, you know, this sort of...
Well, we don't want to go back to what created this. So, you know, Putnam, Northern Westchester, Bosse's, I mean, you know, Ellen, I've known for a while, and Amy, you know, we've all grown to appreciate the skills that they bring to this. And I think it's one of those services that they provide for us in terms of not only investment into updating this website, but maintaining it. And rather than having different people with different skill sets and who's good at it, who has time with it. If I'm teaching all day long, I may not have time. So realistically, I think we come to conclude, you know, that there is a, if that's a service that they provide for districts that they've worked with to get to this point, then it's, you know, as part of sort of, I guess, managing that investment, we should continue to use them to monitor, upgrade, you know, have consistency with regards to where things are placed, you know, and then helping us through, you know, whether it is blog capacity, they're helping with, you know, podcasts. I mean, so there are so many sort of services that are just, you know, possible for us to stay where we are and to keep going forward.
I guess, I mean, like, so if I just take Amy's news from the hell, that, she's doing that on her own right now anyway. So are you suggesting she's doing that, what, maybe monthly or something like that?
Monthly.
Monthly? And it's a really long kind of newsletter chock full of information. Like, if I lose those emails, I don't know where to get that information. Where do I get that?
And we would have their expertise. Go ahead, Ellen.
So if we did it this way, if we took over maintaining and creating reference up and...
She would send the content to you guys?
She would send it to us.
Okay.
And we would also set up the new website so that that type of information was consistently presented. So a parent would know, oh, this is blog page. This is, this is that kind of information, you know?
I think that's okay as well. Just so that there's a spot that we're not dependent on our inboxes, which is, I think, a lot of places where people have gotten to in this district, and I think it's really frustrating for a lot of parents. So, I mean, whether they're putting it in or you are, I think that's good help.
I just, I do think you just want to, there are some pros and cons to the central repository and a note that a new blog post has been sent. The probability that, just speaking for myself, that I'll go to the website to scan it goes down because of the extra step versus the personal contact, it comes directly to my email.
No, but it does both.
And that's what I'm, that's what I was going to get at. You don't want to get away from that. That's the punchline.
No, what happens is, because I've been doing this, I've been doing this for like 15 years, is you put it up on the central repository, and then you send out a blast that links back to that. Then you can click on it, go to it, and then if you lost that email, you always know it's the catalog.
But you'd still be getting the notifications.
Still getting it.
You're getting that personal email that's going to this new blog.
Yeah, I think that's the important part.
And I would recommend as part...
So the cost for the district to work with Bosse's to have them maintain this?
So there are different levels, and so they're not rebuilding. So we're coming in at, I mean, if they were to totally rebuild this, you know, from scratch, it would be significantly more expensive. So we're at another, sort of another layer, and I could present that information. And unless you have some details, Ellen, you can share.
Sure, I can discuss some of the numbers. To switch to this template, this look, we, the district can do one of two things. You can either buy the template outright, which is $8,000, and then it's yours. You could use it for 10 years if you want. Or you can pay a subscription fee of $2,000 a year on top of your regular web hosting fees to subscribe to a library of templates. And then you would be able to use any template that Blackboard has. They actually have a lot of beautiful ones. So if you decided you wanted to change the site down the road, you'd be able to do that without coming up with eight grand or 10 grand, whatever it would be at that time. This year, it would be $821 to upgrade to that site, plus a $600 configuration fee, which is, these are figures from Blackboard. They're not, it's not money that's coming into my department. We're just acting as the go-between there. And then for us to, we've done the work of figuring out the navigation and the design. I use the royal we. Amy's done the work with all the input from the team here. But to implement those changes, we've estimated about another $1,200 for time to import material. You can't, you can't just hit a button and migrate everything over because we've changed the navigation. So things have to be copied and pasted. It's a bit time-consuming. And then to maintain the website for you, it would be $500 to $1,000 a month. I would start at 500 since we don't have experience with your district. And let's see how much time you really need. If it turns out at the end of the year that we realize that's not an adequate number of hours, then we would talk about going to a higher number of hours the following year. It's kind of a flexible approach. I do it with most school districts because we're trying to keep it at the lowest possible cost. So why start high? It's not, it's not the same as a regular profit, for-profit business. You know, Bosse's is really here to support the districts, not to make money. We just have to support ourselves to sustain things, but that's it. So that's the rundown on the cost.
Those costs are typical Bosse's where we get money back from the state?
Yes, yeah. Everything's still aidable in the same way that it was before.
Do you know what the range is in terms of the aid reimbursement?
I don't know that. I would have to look that up for you.
It has to do with our own individual rate, which is about probably somewhere in the high 40s, depending on the service.
About 40% of all of what you just mentioned would be reimbursed to the district.
Right. Like, I know, I'm not usually asked aid on the website stuff, but with all my other communication services, the average is about 40% that districts get back. And that's Westchester and Putnam.
You said 8,000 to buy, 2,000 to get a subscription to the library.
Right.
And how do you square that with 821 now?
So because we're well into the year, this year, the charge wouldn't be 2,000 extra.
821 would be for the subscription.
Right, the subscription. So it would be less, you know, to lay out. I mean, this is your decision to make. I like the subscription idea because of the flexibility, and it's a bit less money to put out upfront, you know? But I, you know, wouldn't take issue with you deciding either way, whatever fits your district best.
But if you spend $8,000, what's the name of this one?
Do you know what the name of this is? Is it Penifol?
I'm just saying Academy.
Academy. So if you spend $8,000 for an Academy template?
Right.
And Academy, is Academy template updated on a yearly basis? And do we get the update through that $8,000 purchase?
Yes.
For how long?
10 years.
10 years, yeah.
So you do get the updates. You just don't get to choose a new template?
Right. You don't get to choose a new, a new template.
You need it only for the school year.
And even though that's your position.
So the value of the 2,000 is if, the subscription is if in five years, you, hey, we want to do what?
Right. It's like razzle-dazzle.
Right.
It's a flexibility.
Yeah, it's a flexibility. You can go and do something different.
It's just four years.
Four years, you break. Five years, issue.
So is the board comfortable with the subscription? And at least, you know, it gets us through the school year, and we could take a look at that.
Can we change later?
Later.
Start with the subscription and move to the flat, or the...
I don't know the answer to that.
Because I...
That we have this side. I can't imagine they'd say no to that, but I, I'm not a Blackboard employee, so I have to double-check that question.
Okay.
But I'm personally comfortable with these numbers at this level. I mean, I'm used to spending commercial world. It's very low.
And not getting anything back at the end of the year either, right?
Definitely not getting anything back, except for hopefully revenue.
Yeah.
But, so this seems reasonable. I mean, I would feel comfortable.
Which way would you go?
I mean, I guess right now, probably subscription because it's just a lower number at this point.
And what would be the timeline for the migration and the seeing a new site publicly?
So if, I would say from the time that we were able to communicate it to Blackboard and they were able to make the switch, for me, it would probably be the next week after that we would be able to switch to this new site.
So sort of, so in the next two weeks?
Yeah, in the next...
Within the month?
Whenever, yeah, whenever that decision comes.
Yeah, to be conservative, I would just say the month of February.
February, okay.
Is there a plan?
The one that I would recommend is, you know, some communications around that switch as well, reorienting.
We'll work with Ellen. She's famously skilled at that.
Is there a plan to get teachers to put stuff on their pages more? And I looked up probably 20 teachers over the last couple of weeks, and I think maybe two of them had stuff up.
Well, it's driven by what we can ask them to do. I mean, some districts have language in their contracts that specifies that they should update them, and some don't. So what we talked about in our, among our, you know, in our committee was, you know, it would make more sense for the, you know, whether, you know, from the department chair angle as well as the elementary chair angle, for them to come up with, to pull together some generic information about, you know, their content area or their grade level, you know, that would be, you know, something that could stay up. And that's something that we could, you know, have Ellen and her team to manage for us. So that it wasn't this, you know, the X, Y, and Z, you know, department has a bunch of information, and the other one has, you know, has the same, you know, information up for the last five years. I mean, so that's, that's really the issue, which is why it's a benefit of working with them to help us to do that. And then working with, as Melissa's worked with, the department chairs and the coordinators at the elementary school, to be able to come up with, what are those sort of broad strokes that we can provide that are not a maintenance, you know, kind of, you know, what, activity that's challenging to manage?
Yeah.
We'd like to standardize what the teacher information looks like, just like what the curriculum information looks like. And then it really is a negotiations issue in terms of getting, if you want everybody to get to a certain level with how much they provide, because we can't make up the information for the teachers, you know, obviously. But at least we could make it standard, make sure there's no one that has nothing, you know? Take it from there.
Basic descriptions, recommended links, you know, but at least it would all be the same. And then hopefully, too, we'd be able to say, these teachers are no longer here, and actually remove them from the site, and the new ones on there, and all of that as well.
And that's part of the benefit of going with Ellen and Amy in terms of the department, you know, that that is something that's done. It's not like an afterthought. It's not, I forgot to do it, or who's supposed to do it, and that, I mean, all of the things that happen that make the management of that challenging. So having, you know, in the absence of having a technology department, you know, using, you know, PNW Bosse's, which, you know, has a very robust and a reputable, you know, track record of doing this for districts, a lot of the Westchester districts, and from my neck of the land, use the service. And I think it's something that's going to help us to, you know, sort of not just, you know, complain about what's happening with it, but be able to maintain it.
It's very difficult to maintain a website with a lot of hands in the pot. We had one district that, shall we name them list, that redid their website beautifully. It was, you know, cutting-edge a few years back, and then they decided to just have, you know, 10 different people throughout the district take care of updating it. And it was a mess within like six months. And then they called us and said, please come back and help us fix this. And so we've been maintaining their site ever since. It's been years because it just went to pot. They tried. They did extensive training sessions. It was required activity of certain job descriptions, but it didn't work. So I think, I'm not saying can't work anywhere, but it does seem to be a challenging thing to manage. It is.
Well, I'm comfortable moving forward. I guess we can officially go on to the next meeting, but I don't know if there is a standard on this.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, it seems that pro-rated, at least you start subscription. And we just sort of see how it functions per year, and if it's comfortable, then making it just across, then you have it from what coverage and on.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Amy and Ellen. Really appreciate it.
It was not an easy task.
It wasn't.
It was yeoman's work.
I was so impressed when you guys would come back with these new buckets and that, putting it all together in a different way for us to look at after we've given you minute details on sheets. So I really appreciate all the time you put in. It was not easy.
It was a fantastic committee, I have to say. Just the collaboration was a joy to experiment and work with, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your professionalism.
Okay. Moving on to the business end. Does anybody have any questions? On business end, one through...
What is CBIZ?
Yeah, I have that.
They, they do our fixed assets reporting. CBIZ is the name of the company.
And...
Good night. Thank you again. There is a, an item, item 14. Melissa, do you want to explain that item, the HTA side letter?
15?
15.
It's actually, it's named, it's kind of named wrongly. You could just switch.
Detachment should be 15, yeah.
It's actually, the HTA side letter is 15, I think.
Not 14, okay.
Detachment should say 15.
Sure. So Melissa, do you want to describe that?
Sure.
I want to thank the HTA for working with us on this side letter.
Yes, I would as well. So the collective bargaining agreement, as it currently exists, stipulates that there's a staff development committee, and it specifies who will be comprised of that committee, and it basically gives a charge. So to be able to plan for professional learning, specifically around Superintendent's Conference Day, the Professional Learning Committee is a group comprised of various different stakeholders. And we have been deeply immersed in collaboration and moving things forward in terms of planning for the professional learning. We've sent out surveys. We've been working together around that. And so the HTA has agreed to create the side letter of agreement so that it's the Professional Learning Committee that will have the charge of planning professional learning for Superintendent's Conference Days. And in this side letter, it names me as the person who will be the And, and in this side letter, it, it names me as the person who will be the facilitator of the professional learning committee. And the agreement is that the majority of the members will be from the HTA, so it will be teacher membership. So we worked in partnership to create this agreement and we have a lot of wonderful things in store for the district.
The other members are clerical, it's our custodial team and teacher assistants, teacher aides, administrator. So it's all four bargaining units who are represented on this committee so that when we, when professional learning is planned on superintendent, on the superintendent's conference day that Melissa mentioned, it's, it represents the needs of all the stakeholders in the system.
So again, I'd just like to thank the HTA, yes.
Thank you, thanks to the HTA and for working with them on that. So the items will have to be renegotiated somehow because the contract's set up until 2021. This sun sets in 2020, so it'll have to be revisited for the next calendar year.
It does. And our goal is to work with the HTA to memorialize it in the upcoming contract.
Anybody else have any other questions about the items? Do I have a motion to approve items one through fifteen? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Just want to point out as well that it says 14 year enclosed, that's actually in the executive content for us because that is a.
Yeah, I'm gonna rename that one to fifteen, the attachment to fifteen.
I'm just saying, it says enclosed here and if anyone in the public is reading board docs and looking for that enclosure, that enclosure of number 14 is a, it's a personnel matter and so it's in the executive content. Okay. Okay, 4B, APPR agreements. Do we have any questions about them or not everyone is there?
Did you read the resolution? Did you read the records of resolution?
Yes, there's two documents that, one is describing the decision, the other is just the, the actual resolution. I can read the resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has received a Level 3 grievance from the Hastings Teachers Association dated January 7, 2020 and whereas the Board of Education reviewed the positions of parties deliberated, deliberated thereon, now therefore be resolved with the Board of Education of the Hastings-on-Hudson Community Free School District, hereby denies Level 3 grievance dated January 7th consistent with the decision dated January 27, 2020, which is approved herein and the district, and directs the district clerk to issue said decision to the superintendent schools and Hastings Teacher Association. The document discussing the issue as, as it was described is also attached. Maybe can you share that? Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Second?
Second.
All in favor? 4C, placement of, after CSE and CBSE, do I have a motion to approve these placements?
So moved.
Second?
Second. We got L.
All in favor? So we've got 5A through, D, D being retirement. Anyone want to say anything on 5A through D?
I would like to say something about the retirement of Gail Kipper, the principal of the middle school. I'm assuming there'll be another time in the future when Gail can be here and we will appropriately recognize her for her service, but what I'd like to say is that I've known Gail for a long time and worked with her as a parent when my kids were in the middle school, as a member of the BLT, as president of PTSA and in a variety of ways. I've watched her change and grow in her position. I've watched her go through her life and, as a parent and become a grandparent and run, train and run in a marathon and go through a lot of really important, both personal and professional changes and growth and development. And Gail has worked really hard during the time that she's been here and she's worked with a variety of, obviously, parents, families, kids. She's worked with, she's seen a lot of teachers come and go, she's certainly seen her share of superintendents come and go, board members, and she's always worked hard to work collaboratively with people and to bring people along. And I guess the thing I think about is that Gail has, through it all, I think she's always kept her eyes on the prize, which is the kids in the middle school. And thinking of a conversation that we had last week, Tim, when you repeated something that I've said to you or what I've said about middle school that I believe and may be different from what others believe and which I understand and respect, but as a parent and as a psychologist, I have always come to feel that middle school, middle school, I think, is primarily about kids coming out the other end, liking school and wanting, and being excited about school more than it is about the specifics of what they learn. Obviously, I think the curricular piece is important, but I think, given the age and stage of development of kids in middle school, I think the social, emotional, psychological development is just so key to who they are and who they're becoming and their sense of self and their sense of self-esteem. And I, I, I guess that's why I've always come to think that if kids come out the other end of it and they're excited to go to school and to high school and to learn, then middle school is successful. And I think one of the things that Gail has always done is she's really focused on the social, emotional development of kids and how key that is, and I don't think that's always true in middle schools. And sometimes I think we, you know, people have even, I wouldn't say made fun, but, you know, that sometimes that piece gets seen as lightweight or something or, you know, for doing different social, emotional programs or mindfulness, but I, I think those things are really important and she's always really stuck to that. And I think in that way, she's always had the interest of kids most at heart and front and center. And it's sad for me to see her go. I think she has put her heart and soul into this district for nearly 20 years, I think. And, you know, I think there are a lot of people in this district who will be sad to see her leave and know that she's made a huge contribution over the years while she's been here, so.
Thank you. And there will be opportunities to celebrate at the end of the school year with any of our, with our retirees and, and others who have obtained tenure this year, so thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Do I have a motion to approve personnel items 5A through D?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, minutes, anybody have any minutes, questions or comments about minutes from Jan 15? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, committee reports, finance.
Okay, so we had our meeting last week and the topics covered at the meeting, you'll see that I put some notes in the board docs here. We spoke about the CPI number that had been released from the state and it was, we spoke about what that meant for, for us for next year. And this was the first time in, in a few years now that the rate was actually below 2% and the impact that would have on our upcoming tax levy. We just spoke about where we kind of see our growth for next year to be now that we have both of those factors. So, you know, although it was a slight decrease, it's about 80,000 or so less than we would have received had it been at 2%. We spoke just briefly about the growth factor again and, you know, we, I think I reported out, I didn't put it here, but that our levy would be somewhere, our allowable levy would be somewhere between like a 1.3 to 1.4 million dollar range. We just reviewed again just for the enrollment and just speaking about looking at it over, I think we looked at over 10 or 20 years' time and just basically demonstrating that our enrollments have been consistently in the 1,600 to 1,700 student range. We've seen a growth, significant growth in the last 10 years specifically at Hillside in, in terms of that enrollment. And just spoke about, again, as that relates to just budget planning for like long-term. And, you know, we spoke about kindergarten, the incoming kindergarten sections and I was mentioning that I would like, you know, hopefully maybe next year we can maybe start a process earlier because it really doesn't align well with our, our budgeting. It would be better if the, if that process started in January just so that we would have a better sense of what that incoming kindergarten cohort would be because I think, because it's a little bit later, we always find ourselves like right before the budget is finalized, either deciding to add another section. So I think especially as our budget is much tighter year, you know, year over year, we need to really, that incoming kindergarten class is always like a wild card in, in our planning. So right now we are, I do, we are planning for six sections based upon some of our live birth data and other enrollment planning data, we'll see where the number ends up. And we just spoke about that, there were, like, the current second grade cohort is actually lower year over year. They lost some students there, so there would be a reduction in sections there for the upcoming year. Five-year planning, we, that was the majority of the meeting was spent on, on speaking about where our projections are. We reviewed where our budget has been, some of the committee members, some of the people who were in the audience there also spoke about the growth of the budget that they've seen in the last five years. And we spoke about ways, things that we should do to start kind of discussing our operation and I think it was suggested to kind of do some type of either analysis of, you know, things that are necessary and areas in which are possibilities for us to tighten up or to help lessen some of the budget growth year to year. So we discussed, I think Finance Committee kind of charged Valerie and myself with kind of looking at the operation and providing some, but just overall departments, looking at areas in which, you know, there could be some, not necessarily reductions, but some efficiencies around the organization as we look at our budget growth to contain some of that. We spoke about just our staffing levels of teacher aides as well as other budget areas and different things that will be looking into and looking to be more efficient in the upcoming years. The, but, the Finance Committee's goal again was to stay within the tax cap for this upcoming year's budget. We spoke about the difficulty of being able to do that long-term without finding ways to be more efficient because our year-to-year rollover budget is currently exceeding our ability to raise taxes. It's, the rate of growth is at like 3.5%, where as we just spoke, our levy is, if we didn't have the growth rate, we would have a serious issue, you know, right now because the growth would only allow 1.81 and we're seeing almost a 3.5% like year-over-year budget. And then the good news of the meeting, after all that negative, no, not negative, but some, some looking at those things, we did, we are in fact seeing an increase in our state aid run next year of about $175,000 and we're optimistic that, although I don't think we'll get a windfall, that typically that number we receive in January is less than what we end up receiving because that's the governor's proposal and usually we'll see some increases once the legislators have an opportunity to work with the governor. So that was it, basically. So our next, I don't think we have another Finance Committee meeting before the budget is presented, so.
Let me just add.
Sure.
Couple things, just for the benefit of the full board. We spent a fair bit of time talking, I don't know who all seen the various budget 101s, I went to the final one. I was struck by the degree to which, there's a very good slide in the budget 101s that gives, that provides a Hastings breakdown relative to a fairly broad peer group and broad to the extent that some of the statistics are measured against 51 schools, some of the other statistics are measured against 48 schools, so it's a much broader than just a discussion of where does Hastings compare to the River towns? What caught my eye in that budget 101 presentation is that across teacher salaries, Hastings was 31st out of 48, so it was solidly in the.
They call it the lower quartile.
Yeah, we were in the, we were in the, you know, the, you know, 25 to 50% range across salary. But then across the instructional program, you know.
Instructional spending.
Instructional spending, we were fourth of 48 in, so, and that's instructional spending then normalized by student, right? So you're not comparing.
As a percentage of your total budget.
As a percentage of your total budget, so you're not comparing Hastings with White Plains, you're trying to do a normalization to make it comparable. So we were fourth across instructional spending, we were also fourth, I believe, across athletics.
Co-curricular and athletics, out of, I think, 52 districts, yeah.
So it drew to my attention, we, we speak a lot about the intractable piece of the budget being what, you know, the contractual spend associated with teachers and administration and staff generally speaking, but that first statistic points to 31st out of 48, or 31st out of 52. Then the second speaks to fourth out of 48. We spoke about this, I think, at some length in the Finance Committee.
Yeah, we did, I forgot about that piece.
And I think it just highlights the degree that we, through the passage of time, and Valerie made the point, it's a reflection of philosophy, but we spend, as, as at least measured just by rank, a fair bit on the various, I'll call them services, but aspects that, that make up the student's experience. So, and within that sort of instructional spending, it will reflect aides, it will reflect, it will reflect everything, everything that goes into students' day. So what I, I think the recognizing, as, as both Valerie and Maureen have pointed out repeatedly and accurately, the rollover cost of the budget at 3.5% is, outpaces the tax cap. Without continuous increases in growth factors, and if we look at what the growth factors were over the past three years, it's very unlikely that they'll grow at the same rate. We've had very significant increase in assessments across Hastings and across Greenberg generally. So it's very difficult, and we've experienced this, I think collectively, it's been very difficult to hold the line on individual points of spending clawbacks. And we have the data points of assistant coaches where we, it became a very heated situation, is probably the quickest way to describe it. Fless is another point, a high-profile teacher retirement is another point, and I think we could go on. So the thought process or the ask, and to just, the specific asking to compare to the language. So we talked about the Finance Committee's task, the administration provide areas in which there could be long-term savings. I think to give a visual that I think would be very effective or worthwhile for the board is to, as, as soon as is reasonable, and I really underline that as reasonable, for all board members to receive a report that tries to highlight the areas, not with any kind of suggestion or ordering or prioritization, but just to outline the areas that represent areas where we spend more than our peers. And we'll have to discuss what the peers are because, the reason I say this is because to make the hard decisions, as we've seen in the three instances I mentioned, it really truly requires seven people to have been fully engaged on the issue, having done all the homework and to. the homework, and to reach a consensus because we know it's undeniable, we will, the Board of Education will receive some negative feedback. It's inevitable because it involves reduced spend. The other thing is that, what I took away from the meeting for the first time in the time I've been on the board is that when a spending reduction is undertaken, it needs to be done with some equanimity across the various, it can't, where I think we've run into issues is when athletics with assistant coaches feel as if they are being targeted. And why not them? Or music with retirement, why are you targeting music and not something else? Which is why a report that is delivered to all seven board members where we really analyze where are we spending our money and where are we spending it relative to our peers? And where are the individual areas where it might represent some level of reduction of service? I think when you spend less money outside of efficiencies, and efficiencies are always a key part, but let's assume just for, whoa, I'm losing my table here. Anyway, I won't belabor the point any further, but I think that that is what all seven board members should have on their radar as something that as fiduciaries, you want that because by then working collectively around some kind of initial template, we'll be able to decide aides will bear some brunt and it will bear a $75,000 or $100,000 a year brunt, but annualized over time, it will be meaningful. Something else will bear some other brunt. Athletics with coaches will bear some shared, so that there will be shared burden across the system in order to try to make sure we're appropriately addressing the fact that we know the revenue piece, we know now, and we can't say that we don't, that the revenue piece in four years is constrained. So, I just want to leave people with that idea. Valerie and Maureen are well aware of it, but I think it's, that is a document and approach we should all collectively be expecting to work off of to then, when we're, to be fully informed as a group of seven on the hard decisions, which will then prepare us to stand behind them when we have to make them. So, that was just something that came out of this Finance meeting, which sounds like it should just be standard, but for all the Finance Committee meetings I've ever been to, this is something, I think, I considered it to be a bit of a new discussion.
Right, but I think the difference that we spoke about this year as opposed to even last year is you had room under the tax cap. You know, we had received the two years prior, very large increases in our growth factors. So, this is like the first, I mean, last year you had the ability to reinstate and stay under the cap, but this year that, that doesn't exist. And I think when we looked at the five-year projection last year, it actually shows the reasons we were trying to make some of those reductions last year. It wasn't so much as that we needed it for this year, but that eventually the growth now, and there's some other, I'm not, you know, there's other things that have occurred that are unexpected expenses that the district's bearing that has, you know, cut into our finances significantly. So, Nick, this upcoming budget, it's, we have asked all the budget managers to bring in things that, it's not so much as like, oh, well, they're going to have to. If, you know, in order to standard a tax cap, there's just no other, another way around it with some other, because now that we have the full picture of, there's things that we have to do and that'll require other areas to have to be tightened up.
And then maybe, maybe it's just as an idea to leave it with an idea, this may be a work session topic that's, and I know that everyone is tight on time, it's kind of the nature of being, but it's, it's an important enough topic once the material is compiled because it is, it is a seven-person topic. It's not a three, three board members at a Finance Committee, just because it becomes so emotional across the community when we're, when we're looking at parts of program, whether it be in the academic or in the corporate.
And we're third in instructional spending.
Third.
Yeah.
And I think it's more complex than that, you know, that we've got to get our arms around what we believe in as a system. And that's then the basis of the budget, you know, that's been my experience and that if all, you know, if all the board members, you know, agree with, you know, our sort of articulation of what that means, and we have an opportunity. Now, of course, we're in a timeline that's dictated by the state, so on February 10th, Maureen and I are going to make the first of a series of board presentations. You know, that's why those Budget 101s are so essential and, you know, we have to time those because that, that does provide the sort of backstory that you don't get at these board meetings where we are required to provide certain information. So, we don't have a lot of time between now and the, and the vote, you know, to sort of, you know, I guess, get ourselves at a place where we, you know, understand, you know, we've articulated a philosophy for the system. It'll eventually happen and it's underway now. But I think the, you know, the big challenge is knowing that, you know, to close a gap and not affect our bond rating, you know, which, you know, Maureen loses sleep over, you know, because it really is real. This is not a matter of, oh, we can find the money. If we take money out of fund balance, we're going to be in trouble. We are.
Yeah, and I mean, the plan even last year was, I mean, we always knew what we were having allotted this year. And again, just, there are things that have unexpected expenses the last two years that are far exceeding that, you know, that when you spend money, we have different things that come up, that reduces the amount, that's where fund balance comes from. So, when you have unexpected things that we're paying for, like it's, that just keeps down.
Draws down.
So, that, that's why even whether different things are happening one year or the other is drawing down on our, our funds right now.
Yeah, and just a couple of points to make. I mean, I think, going back to last year, I think you did an excellent job working with Charlie in terms of trying to inject, because we had that increase in assessment, trying to inject money back into fund balance. So, that's, that's point one. And to your point, Valerie, you're absolutely right. A comprehensive understanding of, you know, individual points that can share collective burden is not between now, January 27th, and the kicking off of the budget process. But to, to, to your point, Maureen, without the assessment increases, it's, it's right there. And I just think that that sort of, that, that process of understanding, you know, each of the areas will be shared burden is a seven-person process. And that has not been. And I think by it's not having been in the past, it really makes, making the hard decision publicly when the heat goes up very difficult. So, I think when this budget, and I don't, and I think we, in Finance Committee, time will tell, but I think we'll be in a place where this budget is, is met without, within the current levy. You know, I think, I think we'll be there.
We will.
But then I think immediately coming out of this budget, it's already beginning the process. And I know that you're both already working on it, so it's really just a highlight to the, for the symbol.
Right, but I think just to be clear, there will be like, it's, you know, we're doing work to get, get there.
Oh, yeah.
So, there are going to be things, so it's not, but it's not going to be that there's not going to be some level of reduction. I mean, just to be clear, like, it's not like we have it and we can squeeze it out.
You're not showing up with this bloated budget and you hit what you all want to cut right now.
So, anyway, those are the points I just wanted the full board to be aware.
Something that'll reflect reductions.
That's important because then we can be proactive rather than reactive when those situations happen.
That's right.
We know where we stand, what the philosophy is and how to make those decisions. It's very, as you said, it's very hard in the moment, so, and we all want to do what's right. So, having that understanding would be...
Yeah, if we're all on the same page, it's easier for us to burden share making an informed decision versus having to rely on three people who are on that committee and those folks being saddled with more responsibility than the rest of us are shouldering. So, I would appreciate that.
And then, and another route to that, I mean, another reality is that, you know, as Maureen mentioned, and, you know, we've been working with the budget managers on them identifying across their budget, the kinds of things, if they know their budgets best, you know, and they're, and they have been given, you know, some directions on, you know, where we need them to come back to us with, you know, so that we can close the gap. I think that the tricky part in my own experience with this, which is really a challenge for the board, is when you hear what's proposed, you have to presume that those budget managers have made the best decisions. You know, we're going to, before it gets to you, we're going to have a lot of cross-conversation to make sure. So, but again, this notion of having a balance across, you know, the codes and it isn't one thing, that's the sacrificial lamb, you know, when it comes to reductions and that. When we bring that forward as a proposal, that's our best thinking. And then I think where things erode and go back to the, you know, but I want to defend that, it's like, but could you take that instead? No, we've looked at everything. I mean, we really have, you know, and that's the part I think is going to be the most challenging is to, you know, come to terms with that, you know, when we're trying to present a balanced budget that there, you know, that people don't go towards their sort of, you know, what we, you know, what individuals believe, but we still are collective, you're collective board, so we can't peel off when the heat turns up and decisions have to be made. And I can't say that enough, having sort of seen it and lived through it, and I think various members of this board has as well, you know, that, you know, presume that we've done absolutely the best that we can in making decisions that, you know, don't negatively impact students, but at the same time provides the kind of good thinking that leads to balancing a budget and developing efficiencies in the process and complying to New York State law around, you know, other things that we have to look at. Because every so often, New York State delivers some information to us that, you know, sometimes, you know, makes it a little more challenging, but in the end, it can also help us to meet some of these sort of expected outcomes with regards to, you know, not being in an environment where we're going to get increased revenue. We're just not. No matter what we do, it's always going to be the challenge. And so, we're going to do our best and we thank you in advance for your support in helping us to, to make some, some adjustments that, you know, are certainly going to, to, I think, challenge your, your fortitude as board members.
Isn't the master's schedule also, our hope is that he might identify some areas of redundancy?
And sometimes those things can be realized in the first year. Sometimes you can, it's sort of like you take the thing out, you take that sort of, you know, block out of the, you know, sort of block house, things fall down. And so, everything has to be sort of measured and strategic across, you know, a number of years. And certainly there'll be some things that, and the master scheduler knows, do not make a proposal that increases FTE. And he says, okay, Valerie. I mean, that, because that's the reality.
Yeah, and that's really, I mean, the board really does all talk about this usually. It's not, it's not really, you know, the Finance Committee can, you know, sometimes provide guidance, but really, it's always been a full board decision. Now, how much has been brought to the board and how robust that conversation has been, especially when you've got growth factors and, you know, we had a special audit that, you know, there were just things, and then with the special audit, the same time that we had the growth factor and it just worked and, you know, and these things, these things worked out. But I think one of the things, and maybe this happened years past, certainly since I've been on the board, it has, and I think Valerie, you know, kind of brought this, Valerie and Maureen brought it together, which is, I think the board's role really should be, I mean, I'm a big believer in saying, here's where the budget needs to fall. Here's the compound annual growth rate. We don't want to go over it. This is where we are. And inside of that, you know, or here's the tax cap, you know, the, the, I think, the, it wasn't just a Finance Committee, it was a budget Finance Committee. And I think that board members were weighing in on some budget items too early in the process in previous years. And I, Maureen, you may have a different opinion on that, I just, I think that it's better if the board gives kind of a fiscal target and then pulls back and has the actual executives in the system do the heavy lifting of the negotiating with the budget owners back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, so that, you know, that horse trading that has to go on is occurring without board members who really don't have the time, expertise, you know, ability to be weighing the back and forth. And oh, by the way, just happened to have been at a party where someone who, you know, was really into music and arts, was really hard, you know, I think it can really screw up. But what we can say is, and I think we've said it this year and I think it's pretty clear, you know, tax cap's not getting pierced. We got a lower than 2% number, we got to hit that, and oh, by the way, that may happen again next year and we can't go to the saver anymore. And so, what's the reality there? Now, the reality may be then in two years, come back and say, guys, I think 24 months from now, we're going to have to pierce the tax cap. So, then let's have that conversation. Why? What is the rationale? What's the philosophical? Because I think, I think Tim made a good point, and this is, I think, Valerie and Maureen, what you've been doing, shave a little bit of everyone, you know? Here's your budget. Nope, you can't have that. What would you do if you couldn't have that? Well, I would do this. Some of that hard thinking, you know, when the money's going up and, you know, and we're getting the growth factors, you can, it happens with everything. We can all get those things. So, so I think that the system we're setting out is a very good system, but it still requires, just Tim points out, all of us to really keep it tight.
Yeah, and actually a question for you, Valerie, just from other, you know, your prior district experience. Do you have any experience where a board is, you know, productive and proactive at working with, you know, the executive to survey the major budget sectors well in advance? Because there's two, there's two things that happen. There's the active making of that upcoming year's budget. And that's preoccupied, you know, been the dominant use of, you know, the Finance Committee's time, you know, every year. That's just the natural flow of things. And then there's that further out, longer horizon look across the major sectors, which is, I think, quite hard to do. Do you have any experience of working with a board to kind of do that forward-looking view and making some philosophical, because really what you're talking about is like, as you said, like a really, a real philosophical decision, because if you cut something, you're making a statement about that thing, to actually accomplish that?
I think that the progress around those issues, Tim, have come through the, have come about when the board, you know, is in agreement that there needs to be a message sent about why we spend what we spend.
Okay.
And that's the beginning of sort of this visioning or strategic development plan that, you know, we are kind of fashioning through a thought group that will evolve to a larger group that will have that purpose, you know, you know, larger group of stakeholders across the system from students to parents to everyone represented in the district. And that begins to, which, you know, and I, as I said, I've seen in terms of just the, where the board coalesces around this sort of larger vision of where we're going and that this is to get our children to, you know, to be successful in life work and future learning. These are the ingredients that are necessary. And in doing so, you do, you know, sort of make those hard decisions, you know, within the framework of that philosophy. So, you wouldn't be spending things for something that isn't, doesn't, doesn't, you know, focus on that, that larger goal or that, that strategic plan that you're looking at, you know, meeting in whatever number of years, you know, five years, you know, 10 years. I think it starts there that it, you know, that when all roads lead to, you know, classroom instruction and what supports students, I think you begin to sharpen, you know, the way in which, I've seen just in my, you know, sort of recent, you know, short experience as superintendent, you began to be better able to defend your choices. Because if it is a matter of, well, you know, we're always going to have this variable where we're just not in a place where revenue's going to be generated. It's a nice thought, but it's not going to happen. At the same time, there are givens that we know that are, there are going to be increases associated with just doing business, you know, the people who do the work. And other unfunded mandates, which also just tickle us to death because no resources come with those. So, that's where it does require, you know, not only being strategic in what that is, what the philosophy is and what we're going to, we're able to sort of stand behind and defend in, in service to children and to the system, but also thinking about what we have to do as a group when it comes to advocating. You know, I looked at the run from the last district that I was in, they're still getting $150,000 above, you know, actually, they're one, one of, one other district in that region that's getting that money. And it's because the board and I always went to things and put our faces out there and talked about what we needed. We had, you know, we knew our sort of priorities and we talked about them. We invited the legislators to our district, you know, we engaged with them in ways that were, you know, that were important because then they remember us, not that we're going to get this sort of, you know, land, you know, the sort of, you know, you know, what big gob of money, that's not going to happen, but as they're making decisions about things, whether it's unfunded mandates, whether it is, you know, you know, other ways that we can, you know, get that different rates, you know, through our BOCs, whatever it happens to be, those things in the end could, you know, could help us. So, I think it's those two things that, you know, having that platform, that, you know, all roads lead to that belief about what the system is organized around, and then that clear advocacy that we all do and how we talk about the system. that clear advocacy that we all do and how we talk about the system and the system's needs when we're in front of the various legislators, that's really important. And, and actually, I think I have a couple of dates from Austin, and they are really sort of the experts in this advocacy arena. You know, when Allison, Sylvia, and myself went to that, it was a dinner on advocacy to learn and talk about how important that is. We, you know, Austin was the district that presented, and it has a whole host of demographic challenges, you know, that are, that would make ours look like, you know, we don't have any.
Yeah.
Right? And, you know, I think there are lessons for us there in terms of just how they have looked, they have looked to the advocacy arena and become very smart about managing that to help them. And so that's what I would think we would, we'd need to do. And from that, so then, you know, as I said, in that, you know, and in another district, that money's always there. So every year they've gotten along with another, and their districts with similar demographics around that. And I remember, you know, one of the senators who was there, it doesn't really matter what party they're in, you know, we caught them all. And that is how that money got into the budget and stays there. It's a community set aside grant because we made it our business to talk to them constantly about our needs and, as I said, invite them and do all kinds of things that make sure that they, that they, that they think about us when they're making those decisions.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Student Board liaison, is that something you have?
Allison, you want to talk about it?
Well, it was sort of an interesting meeting. I think my biggest takeaway, and then we can fill in, is I thought that Valerie was very engaging with the students and really, it was, it was a, it's one of those early morning meetings where the students come and they're kind of just sitting there, nothing going on. And I was really impressed at Valerie in terms of group dynamics and group process, the way that you engage them and tried to get them to talk about what was, like, what's really going on and what does matter to them. And they, you know, they, they were also an impressive group in a way in that they talked about their own wanting to do some things in the school that were meaningful, but not, not take on things that were too big, but find ways to do some fundraising and get people more involved and sort of how they had tried things and learned from their mistakes, like they had tried doing spirit days and people didn't like some of it, so they were, they didn't get defensive and they were just kind of coming back, circling around again and trying to, to come up with other things to do to get kids engaged. And it was actually a really good meeting, but it wasn't like we came in and there was a whole agenda that we were talking about. It was very wide open, but I thought it was very impressive. I thought you were great with the kids and you were very real with them and...
They're great students.
Even to talk, to the point of talking about, how come nobody has anything to say? And, you know, what does it mean when people aren't saying anything? And it was, it was good, yeah.
Silence is data, right?
That's right. That's what you said to them.
Second public comment, Jesse?
Good, thank you.
And Patrick.
Thank you.
Board, any board with comments?
I just want to encourage voters to go vote on February 6th at the Cochran Gym from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM regarding the capital reserve vote.
And if people see this in time, I don't know that they will, but to remind people that there's a meeting on Wednesday at 6:30 at the Community Center to talk about this.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?